I have been called to order the special board meeting on August 15th, 2023. Would you please join me in my.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ginny, would you please take the role? Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Here.
Iker?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Patrice?
Here.
Yusuf Avramson?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Great that everyone's here, by the way, that's really great. Are there any public comments? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to invite our superintendent to.
Can we?
Come, please come forward.
Okay.
You're way too far away.
Thanks again for having us.
Thank you.
Where do you want to go, Beth?
Will, you want to sit on this side?
Sure, sure, sure.
No, that's okay. Okay.
Can I have you take one and pass one down?
Oh, sure, of course.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks again for inviting us and choosing us and partnering with us. Tonight's meeting is called a planning meeting. We're going to propose some dates, some processes. These are your decisions to make. There are reasons why we're suggesting some of these processes and some of these timelines that we talked about during our proposal presentation a couple of weeks ago. But nothing's in pen, everything's in pencil at this point. So take a look at the first page if you will. After the logo page, I'm sorry, the second page. And we'll take it from there if that's okay. And I'll start and then turn over to Donna. I'm stuck. So if you look at the planning meeting for today's date, the 21st, the first decision a board needs to make is whether you want to do a confidential search or an open search. There are states like Florida and Georgia that there is no option. You have to do an open search. An open search means anybody who applies, that becomes public information. We would strongly recommend a confidential search in that people who are applying from other districts, who already have positions that they perhaps would want to lead for for this great district, would be more apt to do so if it was a confidential search. It's a board decision, but I want to have a little discussion about that and see how you feel about that.
How does that work? How would a confidential?
Confidential search means that, excuse me, anybody who applies, applies through our website. And we screen and vet and check references of candidates. And the only people that you would know about are the people that we recommend move forward in the process. And even then, we would ask that you keep that information confidential. Some boards, towards the end of the process, when perhaps you have three finalists, and we'll talk about that staging in just a moment, let's say you have three finalists, the board may choose to say to me or to Donna, we want to release those three names so the public knows, based on transparency, who our three finalists are. Again, that may dim the light a little bit and maybe have some people withdraw in consideration if we allow that to take place. But that's something you can decide down the road, doesn't have to be decided tonight. What needs to be decided tonight is, should we start this process in a confidential manner?
You guys want to weigh in a little bit on that? Go ahead, Ginny.
I would say, in my opinion, and I mean, based on other searches that I've seen done, a confidential search would, I think, would lend us to the better candidate, you know, to getting the best search of candidates that we could get because they wouldn't be, you know, afraid of losing their current job or.
Or damaging their relationship.
Yeah, damaging the relationship with their current employer.
Exactly right.
And I think most executive searches that I've seen are confidential. And that's pretty much how we've worked.
We agree, but other than transparency, would there be a benefit to having an open search?
No.
No.
There is no benefit. The lens benefit is that there may be some members of the public who would say, hey, we're the taxpayers. The school board works for us, we elected you, we want to know what's going on. You could say, okay, we'll tell you about everybody who's applying. The downside is quite large, however.
I would support a confidential search, and I think just to add to, you know, Terry's reasons, is, you know, the start of the search is the beginning of the school year. I'm a big believer in relationships and maintaining those, so I would support a confidential search.
You'll get two to three times the number of qualified candidates if you do a confidential search. And that's really the bottom line. You want the best person.
Maybe just a question, like, would we see, I guess sometimes I've seen where you kind of see the people you rejected along the way, or maybe not by name, but at least the profile of the other candidates that you disqualified at some point, is that?
Yeah, we'll talk about that, but we'll give you a large profile result of the number and type of candidates, men versus women, if they self-disclose. A racial breakdown of candidates, if they self-disclose. Out-of-state versus in-state candidates, traditional versus non-traditional candidates. Yeah, you'll get a full report at the end of this process that you'll know kind of what the picture looks like. You won't receive names.
Right now. At the end of the initial.
Once the contract is signed with whomever you've chosen.
Okay. Oh, but not during, sorry, just to be clear, like, not, so like.
During the process.
Not during the process.
So you're just going to give us three people or whatever?
No. No. We'll talk about this in more detail later on in tonight's meeting. But our first stage would be to deliver a slate of typically five to seven semifinalists that you would interview after we vetted, checked references, and cut that field down to three finalists. And then interview again. And again, we'll talk about this in just a moment, but we would suggest having some committees interview those three finalists as well. Not that they would rank candidates, they would give feedback to the board. You're the elected officials, it's your job to hire this person. But I think it's a good feature set to hear others' opinions if you choose to. You don't have to, but typically boards will like committees to interview the three finalists before the board does on their second round.
And the five to seven candidates will be based on a match with the profile. So the profile will be done first. So we'll have a profile, which the board will then approve, and you'll review the profile. And then that five to seven candidates, we match with the profile. So as Kevin was talking about the end, you get kind of the picture of the pool, but during the process, there's a profile, and then within that pool, we look for matches for your profile.
Can we get more than five to seven? I mean, is that typical?
Five to seven is typical. We can do any number you like, but our credo and our proposal and what we live by is that any one of those five to seven can do that job. It's a situation where if you say, Kevin, I want to interview 10 people, well, that's your choice, but then we won't be able to back up the fact that any one of, the statement that I just made, that any one of those people can do this job.
Yeah, and I guess maybe we're maybe getting spun up a little. It's a, I guess it's the difference of, like, we're talking about the confidential or non-confidential right now.
At this point, yes.
I guess these are more process, like, when, how do you get down to that five to seven, I guess is maybe where.
If we don't cross that bridge during our conversation tonight, remind me to answer that question. I believe that we will. I believe that we will. All right, we got, we got, we got one out of the way.
Ginny, are you?
Sure, so.
Yes, sir.
I do agree definitely with your professional action process. I personally have been involved with the search forum for my Northeastern University when I served as Board of Trustees there for selecting a president. So from search committee and one of the select research. So I have in-depth experience myself too. And definitely I do echo your professionalism and would definitely count on your ability to find quality candidate based on the board's recommendation, where we lead to based on what kind of people we are looking for. So I'm sure we can collaborate to find the best person, candidate as much as we can. So it should be all good. And definitely a private search will be more suitable in this situation as well.
Thank you, sir.
We've gotten through one. But I just want to say, I think I mentioned, we do want to be as transparent as possible.
So.
But on this point, I think we all agree that it's important to serve the community by finding the best candidates and keeping it confidential is the way to open that door for some candidates.
Yeah, and transparency is wonderful, we want transparency, but you have closed meetings sometimes for reasons. And there's reasons for this as well, that we feel are important to consider. The second point is to appoint board and district liaisons. So typically, it's the board president, and perhaps Ginny would be your district liaison. So if we have something that we would recommend that you put on your website, I would send it to Ginny, and she would work with whomever to get it on social media and your website and to deal with, to make sure that you are fully transparent with every step on this pathway. And there are several steps along the way. Again, you can choose whomever you want from the board and whomever you want from the district, but again, those would be our recommendations of what is typical.
I've already asked Ginny.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Nobody can do it except Ginny, really, and she's very good at it.
Yes, she is.
As the liaison, you're okay with it.
I think your recommendation is perfect. Our president, secretary.
The third item is the conversation, without using any names whatsoever, we're in open session, about internal candidates. Sometimes boards want to have internal candidates fast-tracked into the semifinalist round. We would posit and suggest you don't do that. If you have internal candidates, we would suggest they go through the same process as everybody else. So I just want to have that conversation sooner rather than later. We feel if someone is a good match for the profile that we'll talk about developing in just a moment, that they would rise to the top like anybody else. But again, I just want to make sure that that's okay with you guys.
So that would mean that if someone came from internal, we would never know about it?
Unless they, unless they move forward and were a very good fit to the profile that we've developed with all your stakeholder input.
Interesting.
If they're good, they'll be there.
They'd be at the table.
How do we, I guess, maybe it's a different question, how you handle that with the individual then? Because if, I'm just thinking out loud here, like, if we choose not to go forward with an internal employee for the role, there's probably a sensitive conversation that we would maybe want to.
I'm good at having those conversations. It comes up sometimes. But I know a lot of the people in this district who may be applying for this role. Just, I mean, professionally.
It may even happen that that person doesn't make the final three. And then that takes that off of our shoulders.
Exactly right.
They may not make the.
They may not move forward at all, they may not have the profile lens that we're creating to give you the best possible pool to interview.
So I guess I'm coming at it from the, okay, so they don't get it, but how do they get the feedback on like, what would, like, if we don't want to lose them to another district and maybe there's a development plan or something like that that we'd want to think about to make sure that they feel like we're looking after their career interests and so forth, I guess I'm just wondering, how does that play out then?
If an internal candidate applies for this position, of course, we would know because they're applying through our website. I would have a private conversation with that person over coffee, depending on what stage they're at in the process. And especially before we decide on a semifinal slate of five to seven. They would know that that's not a board decision, that that's our decision, and that their value here is not undervalued, but they're just not ready to move on into that position.
Based on the profile.
So that's the thing, we'll develop the profile, because I certainly wouldn't want, you know, an internal candidate that has no superintendent experience to be knocked out because of that reason.
I hear you. There, it depends on what, it depends on what the profile says. If the profile that we develop, that you receive and approve, says, we want a superintendent with superintendent experience, that's, then that's a different conversation. We're not there yet. Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you for though, making sure to go over it.
It comes up, Dean, and we've handled that very, very well. If you look at our proposal, there are three credos. The second credo on that page is we take very good care of our applicants. We always get good feedback from them. I have tons of coffees with people before and after and during the process of applying. We're good at handling those kinds of situations. I hope that you trust us to do so with your internals.
Yeah, no, I don't know that it's a question of trust of you guys, like, I totally appreciate that, I'm just an HR professional by trade, right? So I guess I just kind of wonder, like, what risk does that create for us with those other people? Maybe that's a different conversation outside of the scope of this.
Yeah, I, can we cross that bridge when we come to it? And that doesn't mean that.
Well, we won't, I guess. We are pointed, that's my point, I guess.
We will cross that bridge when we come to it.
Right.
If we need to.
And that doesn't mean that, I don't want to be, if someone doesn't move on in this process because they're not a good fit based on the profile, I can't say with 100% certainty that they won't apply somewhere else. Right. That happens. Penauers right down the street, it's not the same destination kind of district as 207 is, but they might apply, I don't know if that's even open or not, but that, I'm just, because I used to work in the area here, that might be an opening that they would apply for, for a first-time superintendent.
So let me just make sure that we're, like, we've kind of pulled everyone here on this. I know there's some hesitation, but are you?
I think the only thing I would add is, you know, because the idea is to be treated the same as external applicants. If we cross the bridge where we actually see an interview, again, that's a different story, but I guess it's also protection for them if they don't necessarily meet the exact kind of profile that we create, because it is still a very closed and same protocol that we're using across the board, so.
I think fair is fair, I think, yeah, I agree.
And it protects their confidentiality as well.
Right.
Right. I mean, unless they disclose to other people, that's a different story, but.
Exactly right.
But that also tells you a story.
Sure.
If they're disclosing their own confidentiality and we are working diligently to maintain that.
And the last thing that I will talk about in this first section here is, we will develop a spreadsheet of district comparables for you to consider when you're ready to make a contract offer to somebody. Just so you know, kind of what other people are paying, other boards are paying their superintendents, giving comparables. Now, District 207 is unique, but there are comparable districts. George might have a better sense of that than the board, if you want to relay that to George, George, give me that list and I'll do the homework. But that's up to you. If you give me 10 or 12 districts that you think are somewhat comparable, I don't know, OPRF, or, you know, whatever, it's up to you. But I just think it's important that you have, as a board, some numbers in front of you before you go to your attorney, Todd, and say, can you draft a contract for us? That doesn't, that doesn't mean you got to match those numbers, but at least it gives you a lens by which you can make your initial contract offer.
I definitely think we want to do that.
Yeah.
It's really probably just a question of what are the comparable districts.
Yeah. Would you mind if I work with George? George, you can share with the board to make sure we didn't miss anybody, is that okay with you, George? Okay. And there's no urgency there. This is, you know, a document and some, that you would use at the end of the process. Does that make sense?
I think throughout our experience, yes, we most definitely consider teachers, the staffs, if for compensation, based on the surrounding or neighborhood community, most definitely. So we do have like our neighborhood high school, of course, like National South, GBN, GBS, Stevens, New Trio, all that stuff. So we definitely circulate and see how comparable we always have been. So it should be a good handle.
Thank you.
And I think that would probably be good background information too, because when the person does get hired, that is all public information, and we don't want the public to be, you know, fallen over when they see this salary. And I think that that's something that actually I would, I would say, let our residents know what it is.
Absolutely.
You know, let everybody know what the salary ranges are so that they know that we're not, you know, crazy, you know, putting out a offer like that.
That's what, that's a good point, very good point. Okay, so George and I will get to work on that in the next three days or so. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lee.
Okay, so now we are into the go-nitty-gritty. So if you look over the next page, which is the attachment A, we'll talk about the timeline. So we actually met the first date. Very, we did a good job.
The first one's out of the way.
So we are here tonight, the 21st. I'm good, thank you. So, and I would say these are dates that we have pulled together. If you want to move some things up, move some things around, let us know, but this is how we pulled it together in order to meet the December 2023 timeline. So then that gives you a poll from January to July 1st for that person to be ready to start. So what we looked at first is in October, between the 2nd and 3rd, that we would do the community engagement, that's when we would do the focus groups, and we would work with the board, and Ginny would help us in that regard in terms of who would, who we would want on those focus groups. We would have an open forum for our staff, an open forum for the community, and then the Board of Education would have a focus group as well. So we tried to stay aligned with your board meeting dates as well. So we tried to work within dates that you have listed. And then during that window, we also would do an online survey, a feedback for the school community. And typically, when we post that, we have a deadline, so we post, we don't leave it posted for long, because we want to make sure it's at the top of, as soon as people get it, they get in, provide that feedback. Usually try to have it up for maybe about a week. Two weeks takes, people forget to do it. So during that October 2nd and 3rd window is when we would want to do our focus groups, the forum for staff, the open forum for the community, and then, of course, the board's focus group. And then we would also want to get posted the survey for the members of the community because we need to take all of that information in order for us to present to you the superintendent profile. So, and if you notice, we will be accepting applications starting this month.
Tomorrow, I'll post this tomorrow.
Tomorrow, August 22nd, and through November, but by November 6th, we would have for you the new superintendent profile for you to review, which will be a compilation of the focus groups, the staff, the board focus group, the survey information that we get from the community.
So when you say board focus group, that's when you discuss with us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you as the board, so it's not a subset, it's the board's focus group.
It's our whole.
It's your, it's your group. So, and we pulled together, and I'll say this, the interviews with focus groups, we really look to you as the board in terms of, we have on here already an open forum for staff, so you may want to have a parent focus group. You may say, we'd like to have, when we say staff, we're looking at not just your certified, but classified staff as well. And so we're looking to you in terms of stakeholders. Do you have community organizations that you think should be a part of a particular focus group? Is there any, are there any concerns within the community that you know that you've got stakeholders who need to be at the table so that their thoughts can be heard? So we'll look to you to let us know outside of your staff, the community, Board of Education, what other focus groups. You may want to have a student focus group.
We would encourage, we would encourage that.
Student focus group, for sure.
So when you, on November 6th, ideally, particularly that date, when you present the profile to the board, do we then have a discussion, or is that what the profile is? Do we vote on it?
We typically don't ask for a vote, it's a presentation, it's based on the psychometric data that we discussed in our proposal. If the board says, Donna and Kevin, I want you to strike profile number six, that's your decision. We would encourage, we would not encourage that, but we would, again, hope that we would, our profile would be the one that matches up with what the community as a whole, including staff and board members and everybody else.
Students.
Wants, and their students and parents and business leaders want in their next superintendent.
Are those weighted in any way?
They're not.
And Carla, do we have a vote on it, or is it, we just have a discussion?
No, I think it'd be a discussion.
You can discuss all you want, and if you want to put an approval of the profile on your board meeting, that's fine, but we will present, again, with the board's permission in open session.
And we're presenting the data that has been collected from all, and which is why it's important that we come to the board for, as we're doing the focus groups, that you know your community in terms of who needs to be at the table, and it could be the local business leaders who are looking for students who are working, and it really does depend on what your community looks like in terms of stakeholders that are at the table. We always do staff, that's a must. And then because it's a high school, we definitely would recommend students. And then you have your community groups, and of course, the parents is another group that we always would recommend.
And you might have a very large PTL, PTA engagement in all your schools, and we would suggest you get 12 of those, maybe four from each of the three campuses to sit on a parent PTA, PTO focus group. Again, it's your decision what the number of focus groups are, usually eight to 10 to 12, and about, no more than 12 people per focus group, so we can have a really meaningful discussion. And they take about 45 minutes.
So, you go ahead.
I just wanted to get the, just so I have it, that I see this in my head. So, okay, look at Iker's thing, August 21st, that's today, we're talking about this. August, so you're going to go out and start, start talking to people now?
I've already done that.
About, you've already started, so staff and?
No, 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 candidates only.
Okay, candidate. So, but, all right, so that's ongoing.
You're doing that.
But then the forums are open, so we're going to, on the 2nd of October, we're going to give you that information, or we're having an open meeting on October 17th?
Can I do a visual on the board?
I'm kind of mixed up on the dates.
Yeah, and winners are.
Let me just, let me just throw something on the board and see if it makes better sense for all of us. So the two dates are 10-2 and 10-3, right? Is that what's on the sheet?
Yes, 10-2 and 10-3.
Is this a Monday?
Uh, yes.
Board meeting.
What time is your board meeting?
That's a board meeting.
Six.
Six.
We will have an hour-long discussion with the Board of Education in closed session at 6 o'clock, or at 5 o'clock, whatever, I, you know, I don't care. I'm just throwing out things here. Maybe at 2:00 PM that day, we're meeting with your students.
And is that our focus group?
That's your focus, that's the board focus group. These are all focus groups.
The board focus group is the 6 o'clock. That's close.
It's a closed session because we want, we want good, honest feedback. And if you want to yell at me, that's a good time to do it. At 3:00 PM, maybe we meet with the non-certificated staff. Maybe at 4:00 PM, we meet with some building administrators. And at 4:00 PM on the 3rd, maybe we meet with your cabinet. Do you guys call them cabinets here, George?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so where are you, the questions that you're asking are, I saw it here.
There are some open-ended questions there.
And is this stuff that?
No, no, that's the survey.
That's the survey, so keep going to.
Keep going.
So focus groups is attachment E.
One more page. These are the open-ended questions we ask during the focus groups.
Okay, so we don't really have any input on those.
Nope, those are our generated questions. And here's why you have no input. We feel, let me rephrase, we know that these open-ended question responses will generate the correct profile for this district. Maybe at 5:00 PM, we do an open forum for community. My handwriting is awful. And we have to pick a spot for that, or actually the district, jury, whatever. You have to pick a spot for, maybe it's an auditorium somewhere, you know, or cafeteria or something like that. And at 5, at 4:00 PM, or 3:00 PM, let's make it 5:00 PM, the next day.
We try different pens.
You submit it.
That's done.
Okay. 5:00 PM the next day, we do an open forum, thank you for the suggestion.
We'll yell at you in open.
All right, good. So open forum for staff. So we would do one on one day and one on that. Whoever wants to show up can show up. But again, we work with the communications office and you to make sure that it's well populated and well-promoted so that lots of people have a lot of information ahead of time so they can show up if they want to. so they can show up if they want to. What you've got to determine as a board, what focus groups do you want? And who are you going to invite to those focus groups? There's a sample template letter you use to invite people to those focus groups, there. That's a decision you have to make as a board.
Kevin, at the same time, my concern actually is, this is all good too, but at the same time, most ultimately, who we would know better than trying to select a right superintendent based on the experience of this particular districts? Like I said, it could be just a plain leadership, or someone who's very creative on academic field. Yeah, we might need that, but we might need some other special circumstances that the community in general students might not know personally.
That's true.
So most definitely, ultimately, again, it is from the board to make that decision. And those students and the teachers, every community, definitely is open, kind of like a general feedback. The consensus in general, based on that, plus what we really, really need for this particular kind of situation.
Good observation.
Present that to you guys, and you can look.
Absolutely. So your homework as a board is to determine the number and members of the stakeholder groups you want us to be engaged with on the 2nd, 3rd, and two locations, you know, one for the 2nd, one for the 3rd, and a, a location for the two open forums. One for any staff member and one for any community member, parent in the, in the district.
And you have three schools, you're saying two locations.
I would say two locations, one for a staff and one for your community members. I would guess, you're not gonna have a large turnout with a community here. Here's why. We're not Florida. And your district is, has a very good reputation.
Right, I think what we'd be concerned about is making sure that each of our school populations.
I hear you. So here's, here's, I thought of that. So here's a suggestion, take this or not. Maybe at 4:00 on the 2nd, we do an open forum at East for the staff, and at 4:00, an open forum at West for the staff. So we do two at the same time. Donna, handle one, I'll handle one. And we'll do something similar for your staff numbers. I want to make it work for you. You've got three campuses, we can only be in two places.
Staff and community were the two things.
I would, I would do a staff here and a staff here. Maybe one at Main East and one at Main West. And then a community one at East and a community one at West. Usually later in the evening, because people are working typically during the day. Not always, but typically. So maybe at 5:00 each one of those two days. And then we would do the, we'd scoot over to where the board meeting is and be here as soon as we can. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, we cover everything, self-population, at Main East usually.
Right, I'm thinking of Eastern.
Our bridge displays.
Those are the two extreme.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's important.
I think that's important too.
And I mean, we then have an idea for, did we get people coming out? Like you'd be saying, while we had nobody. And that, that would be, I mean, I don't know, at that point, I might say, can you do another one? Or can you, I mean, because I don't forget, the survey is also available.
Right. So you may have community members who can't make the forum, but they are, let's say we get 300 surveys.
Okay, you'll be able to give us some numbers, right?
Oh, you'll get such, you'll get a very detailed report on all the members, anybody who shows up to any of these meetings, not their names.
Which area they're in though, or?
If they self-identify.
Okay.
They always, we can't compel them to self-identify.
Okay, okay.
I guess just, maybe just one more, so we're saying we do staff and community at two locations.
Yep.
Why not? I get there's only two of you, but why can't we do a third day and hit all the schools? I guess just to make sure we've got, I'm just thinking like, if I'm a teacher here or a staff here, why am I driving to Main East, like, just come here for a day?
Let me, let me look, like, hold on.
Oh wait, let me say this, what if we did this, Kevin? What if we did the, I, I went to one building, you went to one building, we separated on the 2nd, and then maybe went to the 3rd building together on the 3rd?
Is it really necessary though? I mean, East and South are in the same town, it's not like driving from the south side of Chicago, which is.
Staff, I was.
But it kind of is.
I'm more staff, community fine, staff is, I guess, where I was thinking. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out. Here, 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 I, I hear what you're saying.
I'm just trying to.
That's an option.
It's an option.
How about this? How about Diane, uh, Diane? How about Donna and I work on a, a possible schedule and location settings for your open forums and, and, and focus groups? Worst-case scenario, I can be here on the 4th. I just looked at my calendar.
Okay.
When I say here, I mean one of your buildings.
I think it's mostly the staff, I think, I think the community is probably fine.
I'll make it work, I'll make it work.
I feel strongly that we should have one at each school.
I hear you. You don't want to disrespect anybody just because of where they work.
And especially since this is.
Yes. I'll make it, I'll make it work.
Kevin, I can be here on the 4th too.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll put a sample schedule together and send it to Ginny and to share with the board, and you guys let us know. Just don't do a playoff or that's foible, you know what I'm saying? Okay, you guys know that, okay.
Okay, wait, so go back to this timeline thing, we got to the 10th, 2nd, all right. So the surveys, you start sending out the surveys.
I would, I would recommend you post it on the 2nd.
Yes.
And close it that Friday night.
We post it. So we post it.
The district posts it. I, I give you the link to post it.
And then, so it's our job kind of to get that word out. Please, please, you know, fill out a survey, you have seven days, or whatever it is.
Right. And then you would, like, every day, remind them, or whatever, whatever you do with social media.
Whenever, however you send it out, push it out just as a reminder, please fill out the survey. And like Kevin said, we probably close it on Friday night. So it would have, give that first thing on the 2nd, and then then Friday, which would be the 6th.
And we have plenty of ways to communicate about the, you know, get this out, so, yeah.
So that's, so, so the forum and the survey are really simultaneous, yes. I mean, they're in parallel.
That's, that's, that's the, that's the week of input. And we're doing it in a modality of ways, but yeah, that's the week of input.
But there's longer for the surveys, you know, those.
Yeah, I mean, we want to, we want to give everybody a chance for a lot of cases.
And somebody might come to the forum and not, say, forget that they wanted to say, they're like, oh, let me get on and get on the survey and do my survey.
Right.
So, so if we have this going on the 2nd and 3rd, then we can help also be reminding people, hey, the survey is up, if you have additional information, please go on the survey and fill that out.
Do you ever consider doing like a, maybe tuck a weekend in there on one side for the survey? I'm just thinking like, during the week, people may be busy with jobs, and they may take time to actually do it on the weekend.
We've, we've done that, which, if you guys want to employ the Sunday night, that's fine. Doesn't break, doesn't, doesn't hurt my feelings. Going back to what you guys talked about before for staff and buildings.
Yeah.
If we're gonna be in three buildings for staff, I know this is more work for us, but I would suggest three buildings for students, too, then.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, I think that.
And you do your student council, whatever, however you choose, it is up to you, but that's up to you. But I would, I would do, I would do the students at every building. You want to hear all the voices.
Yeah, they're not gonna be trail, they're not less likely to trail more, yeah.
But I'm still thinking, students, actually, realistically, students, they're more in need of who their qualification of teachers more of, than of superintendent. It's important, most definitely, because what I'm trying to get out of is, again, the students, the community, individuals who are looking at a more of a branches, the leaf itself, that they need this, we need this kind of superintendent, we need this kind of teachers, A, B, C, you know, the qualification that particularly individual. But we, as a board member, most importantly, we have to look at more of a tree as a core. So we understand that each branch is very important, and we are trying to cover that as much as we can, but we cannot just kind of be on one side, and we really have to, as I say, we have, we always have to look for that as a whole tree. What will be most beneficial for the future of our main township moving forward from 10, 20 years from now, based on our superintendent qualification. And I'm sure you will be very consider of such.
Yes.
That's what we need you here.
I don't disagree with anything you've just said, and I think they're very good comments. I will say this though, as I've done focus groups with high school students over the years, they are tremendously insightful. And sometimes their comments and insights are remarkably on target.
And, and the way the questions are structured as well, so when you're asking a student, what do you, what do they see as the district's greatest strengths? You will be surprised at what they will come back and share out. And it gives you an idea, and then even as they talk about the attributes of their district, and if they talk about barriers and challenges, it may bring to surface some things that we as adults won't always necessarily see, because this is their living experience.
So relative to the community, who would be responsible for picking the, the point, the kind of the organizations from the community that would be either responding groups, being on the ser, because of the open forum? And like kind of, would they be pointed delivery to like Chamber of Commerce and, you know, other? I guess when I look at, I look at where the superintendent interacts. I mean, really, they're the face of the community in, in Main Township.
Right.
Right, so you've got, you know, people like the Main Township Supervisor's staff. You've got the Chamber of Commerce and three, four, actually five, five different villages. You've got, you know, I mean, I would, I would want to make sure that they get touched by this and that they don't, we're not just relying on them to see an email to say, fill out the survey.
I hear you.
Because we, I know for the Chief of Police position here in Park Ridge, I was on the search committee for that, and that was, you know, one of the community responders. And we really were targeted by who had that, that interaction. Because if we miss that, we may miss a key point of what that organization in the community is looking for from the superintendent.
You know, we have a really strong network of community partners in, for our, for our career services.
In the, in the Community Advisory Board.
In the Community Advisory, we have a pretty strong list of some of those businesses.
I guess, yeah, I just don't want to miss any that's on.
Right, right.
The short answer to your question is, it's the board's decision. You tell me, you tell us what focus groups you want us to interact with, and you also select the members of those focus groups.
Okay.
Maybe one focus group for elected officials, including township people, but maybe, is Mark Book your, your senator?
He's one of them.
I don't know.
Murphy.
Murphy.
Murphy's our senator.
Whoever, and, and so you have a dozen elected officials, maybe mayors, and then maybe one for business chambers, two from each chamber, whatever. That, that, those are board decisions to make.
Okay, that, I just wanted to make sure that we don't miss some of the, because, well, an answer from Niles might not be the answer from Spines.
Right.
And that's why it's so important to be able to cross the, you know, cross the, do a cross-section of everybody.
Yeah, that's, those are your decisions to make.
So we have September to do that.
Yeah, you got about a month to figure that out.
Okay.
Okay.
But you want to make sure people have enough time to block their calendars and things like that.
That's what I was gonna say, so, a little less than a month, just because we're, we are on an aggressive time trend. And if we're highlighting October 2nd and 3rd, then you think you want to have by the middle of September who those individuals are, because we, if we send you a schedule and we're saying, okay, you tell us, we need an elected official's focus group, we need a community, our Chamber of Commerce, whatever those focus groups are, then Kevin and I have to work out a schedule. And then you need to be able to let the individuals know who you want. You need to say, this focus group is gonna be meeting on October 2nd at 3:00 or 6:00. Well, you guys are 6:00. So maybe it might be that they meet at 5:00. Or, or if it's the Chamber of Commerce, because I know in terms of like students and your, we're not gonna pull people from your buildings during the day. So that then may free up, that maybe on that Monday, we would do something earlier in the day for elected officials.
And maybe 2:00 to the chamber, and maybe, you know, 1:00 for the cabinet, it's at the district. You know, there are several options early in the day for some other groups.
But we would need to know from you what groups you want.
By when?
Built that.
Middle of September.
It's still middle of September.
Not only the number of the groups, but I would start working on recruiting the people who represent those groups for those focus groups. Again, no more than 12 per group, okay?
Because we try to keep it 45 minutes with a focus on those questions.
And it's conversational, we want to have a good conversation.
It's, I'm sorry, it's online or is it in-person?
In-person.
In-person. In-person.
Do they get the questions in advance?
No.
No.
The thing that, that we're gonna send to Ginny tomorrow is this timeline that we would suggest, I'll send it to you more, Ginny, so you can publish this with your, on your website, so you're transparent as to what, what your process is looking like. But the attachments and stuff, that's just for your use.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and, and I think I heard that you want to open the survey on the 2nd and close it on the?
The Sunday night.
Sunday night, the 8th.
Yeah, I gotta write that down.
Okay.
Or say by, yeah, by the end of the day.
So I'll send you this whole document, Ginny, so you can, there's a, there's a letter there that you can use, Ginny, to post on your, on your website, whoever does that for you. And I'll make sure that you have it in Word so you can adjust it.
It's a holiday.
So 10-2.
Which is Sunday.
To 10-8.
And then close it midnight on the 8th.
I got it.
Okay. And so while all of this is going on, as Kevin said, we will be posting the position tomorrow. So we'll be getting in people applying all along. So once we get through with the feedback week, all of this, then we take all that, all of that and pull it together to make it into a profile that we would then come and present to you on November 6th.
The posting that you're doing, that you just came up with, like, based on our website, describing our district, et cetera?
So, let's, we'll get to it, but if you want to, let's, let's move in real quickly to it.
Okay.
Is that okay, Donna?
Yeah, that's fine.
I apologize.
No, it's all right, Donna.
Look at, look at the third to last page, this is the sample ad. And the two pages that are behind it will be linked to this ad. I also, you know, I wrote this myself, I'm not a main person. I took this from publicly available data. If you want this edited in any way, shape or form, I will send it again to Ginny tomorrow morning, or tonight, so you can change this and send it back to me so that it reflects what you want it to reflect. If you make it too busy, however, people will just gloss over it, do you know what I'm saying?
Kevin, I'm gonna question the errors, like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, just for the survey.
The survey? Okay, we're off the ad.
Oh, again?
Okay, that's cool, whatever you want to do.
No, actually, that item number 5, although item up to 4, it has, at the last, you always have order, please specify. Number 5 is also important to, to have that order, so the people might have, A, their opinions beside the one that you have listed for that, the line for item number 5.
You're a thousand percent right, I missed that, I'll make sure it's added, okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, I gotta come up with.
Go ahead, Linda.
So regarding the qualifications, the kind of the template.
Where are we at here?
Sample, we're back, back to the template.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
So then, possess this other qualifications as specified and required by board of directors. That's just, you're just gonna take the applicants in, and then at some point, you'll hone that down, whether they qualify or not, based on our, our input.
I wouldn't put more than what the language is right now. I will say this, if you go downstate, if you're in Sangamon County, for instance, oftentimes boards of education will say, superintendent must look within the district boundaries.
Right.
That doesn't really happen anymore. I wouldn't make this, those two bullets tighter than they're listed right now. We will, we, Donna and I, will match up to the profile.
So that does make sense, yeah.
And once, on November 6th, we present the profile, on November 7th, we will email the profile to everyone who's applied, and you'll post it on your website.
Right. So then now, fast forward to that, November 6th, will you allow us to take a look at that profile before the meeting, or will our first time be at the meeting when you're presenting it?
We would prefer to show it to you at the meeting. Now, Linda, if you tell me, Kevin, I'm directing you to send that to us ahead of time, I'll do it, of course.
I am not, but I would, would ask why.
We think it's a measure of our transparency, and we have, about six or seven years ago, I did a search in Urbana, Illinois. They asked me the same question, so sure, I'll send it to you ahead of time. By the time I got to the meeting, Board Member A wanted items 2 and 4 off the list. Board Member B wanted items 5 and 13 off the list and so forth. It turned into what individual board members wanted, and they were fighting within each other, so they couldn't even agree on the things they wanted there and wanted taken off. off. We want to give you an accurate profile. By accurate, I mean what the community, students, teachers, cabinet, and especially the Board of Education are looking for in your next leader. We know this works. We have a 97% success rate. I know I'm circling the question, but that's, that's the basic reason. We want to deliver a fully transparent, fully scientific profile for you to receive that night.
And if...
That makes sense.
And if there is something on there that our board agrees that we think should be changed.
We'll take it off.
We can take it off, we'll just do it in an open discussion.
We can have a discussion about it.
And it makes it more transparent for your community, too. Because once we put this out, we tell the community, hey, we're listening to the community, we've got focus groups, we're collecting information, the board is collecting, so when we get to the meeting, the board is having a natural conversation about that profile and about, oh, this reflects what we thought. Because you'll find a lot of times that the community will say a lot of the same things that you're thinking, because you represent the community. So, so it makes it a natural conversation. The other part of it, too, is that way it doesn't get out. There's nobody who has it, other than the Board of Education, the first time that it's presented. Nobody else has seen it, touched it, had input, it's yours.
So, does that mean that the applications, the application window then closes, like, that...
No, no. We, we keep it open. We want people to look at the profile and say, hey, I think I'm a good fit for that district.
What about the folks that applied previously? Do they, like, do you allow them to add? You, you know what I'm saying? Because, you know, they're putting in their own CVs with such and such information with anticipating what this district net wants, right? But then the profile comes out, November 6th, so how do you navigate that? So, it stays open, but...
It stays open and we email the profile to every single applicant, whether they've completed their application or not. Plus, we email it to our 67 consultants that work for our firm, saying, here's our profile for Maine 207. If you have a candidate in the Twin Cities, or in Milwaukee, or in Detroit, or in Indianapolis, or in California, that might be a good fit for Maine 207, please feel free to share my information and especially this profile with them. So, our candidates, I'm sorry, our consultants are good at matching profiles with people who have applied for other positions in the world that may be a good fit for 207. Does that make sense? It just helps us get a better field for you.
So, after we present the profile, send that out, then late in November, Kevin and I will be interviewing and vetting, um, what we call promising candidates, which means that we've, that we've gone through all the paper screenings and, and I'm going to venture to say, we're going to have a lot.
Yep.
So, we've gone through all of it.
I hope, I hope.
I believe that. And then we are looking for matches to that profile. So, that's, so our work begin, as soon as that profile is out, then we start to look for matches to that profile. And then our goal would be that on December 4th, we would present a slate to the board of five to seven recommended candidates based on the profile.
December 4th?
Okay, December 4th.
Unless you want a special board meeting.
We, we just, more takes formal action in December.
That would be late December.
Okay.
That's gonna be a busy month for you.
Okay, yeah.
Because mid-December is, you could do a special board meeting.
We're gonna do it at Christmas.
Yeah.
Well, now, now, here's the thing. We're presenting, there's a window. You want to keep the window open wide enough so that you get the right pool of candidates. You don't want it too narrow and too late that you lose candidates who have signed with other districts. There's a little finesse there. If the board were to say, you know, we want to do a special meeting in late November, um, to receive the slate of five to seven, I could live with that. Then you're running into Thanksgiving a little bit and things like that. So, I'm just throwing it out there that we are adjustable. But what we, these dates, as Donna had, had, had said earlier tonight, we kind of pick these dates based on your published board calendar.
Gotcha. But we, we have a, some, some factors at play, George can speak. We have to hire a, a principal of Maine South, too. So, we are a little aggressive on, on this. Not shortchanging, you know, but, but we do want to be a little bit aggressive on this. And if, if we're just getting the five to seven on the day of our December board meeting, is that the day of our December board meeting?
Yes, December 7th.
Okay.
I, I thought I picked December 4th off your calendar. If I missed that, I'm sorry.
No, it's a board meeting.
Okay. So, let's, 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 let me throw this out there, Carla. If you do your, um, is that a Monday, December 4th?
Yes.
You could do your interviews that week.
I would though, I would say, I would prefer, if we could, to have a special board meeting, perhaps even the, like, the Thursday before, if we're also gonna have this interview and workshop.
Yeah, the workshop takes about half an hour.
It's, 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 we, I, I, my, maybe I'm...
What do you want a special?
Let, let me say this, too.
For the can, uh, December 4th.
The consultants from...
I can't have it November 30th.
You're not gonna see the candidates on the 4th, just so you know.
I understand that.
Okay. Just want to make sure that...
I'm just thinking about, uh, brain power.
Sure.
That I generally have, and I think this is super important, but maybe everyone else wants to do it at this, uh, at the board meeting.
No, I'm, I'm in favor of that, too, personally, a little bit.
Wait, of having a special board meeting?
Of having a special board meeting before our regular board meeting, to do the, receive the slate and, and the interview.
And then the workshop.
If we could do that. Does that, does that work?
Yeah.
Yes, but just letting you know.
We want to choose a date.
We could.
Um, I'd be off the board Thursday nights because...
Thursday nights are not good.
Especially leading up to Christmas.
Yeah, Thursday nights.
That's your busy schedule.
Yeah.
Not Thursday nights for me, either.
Okay.
Not interfere with that.
Monday, the 20th.
And I teach Tuesday and Wednesday nights.
Okay.
They have to take you hours.
Well, we could pair with that.
We could pair it, or that may not even be necessary.
Okay, when do we have, okay, the Monday, the 20th, is that a problem for anybody?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
20th.
Hold the phone.
Or the 27th.
What, what, one month?
20th is Thanksgiving week.
November what?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
But we already have a finance and building.
We could, we could match it with that, is what we're thinking.
Are we doing November?
November 20th.
Monday, November 20th?
I, I'm in Korea by the 20th. I'm coming back on 25th.
On the 20th?
So, 27th sounds good, but...
Okay, it's this poll for the 20th or the 27th?
I'm for both.
You're go for both, okay? Ginny will send a poll for that.
Okay.
See who can get the most.
So, uh, uh, just FYI, Donna has a board meeting on the 27th. I can present the slate, it's no big deal. Um, we can have a cake, because the next day is my birthday, so that's great.
Well, we'll see.
So, so, I, I, I know, well, that's right, I gotta earn it.
Might be carrots.
Okay, that's fine. Are we saying the 27th?
No, it, it could be the 20th, but...
At the 20th, I'm, I'm completely available.
Okay.
Because that's right up to the joint annual.
And I'm in, um, yeah, I'm out of town on the 28th, uh, but the 27th works for me. As, as does the 20th.
Okay. We'll poll, we'll let, we'll get that to you.
Let me know. Yeah, let us know.
Okay. Because Ginny is not available on the 20th, but we can find out.
As, as you make that, as you make that determination, look at the next three bolded, kind of outline dates. It may change some of that language as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because once we do that workshop, then we need to do the interviews for those five to seven.
Which usually takes about three evenings. Just FYI, usually Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever you want to do. You'd be here from like 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock on each of those three evenings. If you have five, you could probably do it in two, but if it, let's, let's hope, let's hope, not, not hope. Let, let's prepare for 7, just in case.
Yeah, might be helpful to map this out, because that's the time you're gonna be, right? I'm just hearing everyone's reactions.
No doubt. No doubt. You've got work to do.
I feel like the sooner we can do the workshop and activate that, the better.
Yeah, I agree.
So, so, we would have to have a special meeting in December if we're trying to meet the December, uh, board meeting approval, right? Then who's giving the contract?
Yeah, that would be after you've made an initial offer and have the two sides settle on a contract, then you take action at a special board meeting, perhaps.
Can we kick, is there any way, I mean, I know we're pushed for time already, can we do the five to seven by mid-November?
By mid-November? In my opinion, that, that closes that window too quickly.
Linda, we're at the 20th.
20th, you're right.
So, that's what we're thinking right now.
I think that's a good halfway point. And that, that's my suggestion.
Yeah. Because we need to make sure we have...
You want to have a good poll.
And we're not pushing out the profile until the 6th.
The 5th of...
The 6th of November.
The 6th of November.
We're presenting that at the board meeting.
We're presenting that, and then that closes that window for additional candidates.
Normally, it wasn't 6th, it was, like you're saying, that's in November 6th, you, the purpose.
The profile was out.
How long do you normally give? 30, 30 days or 45 days per, based on Midwest, Chicago area, you know, the Thanksgiving holiday season, with our desperate timing ones.
Okay. So, we would have already had it posted for two months before we...
Three, three days.
So, 30, yeah. What if we run the interviews the week of the 27th of November? And so, after Thanksgiving, Ginny will be back.
That's fine with us. We're not here for that process, so that's really a board decision solely.
But, okay. All right. Okay. And it's a three-night, uh, three nights.
The week of the 27th.
Seven.
And I teach Tuesday and Wednesday night.
Okay. So, it'd have to be Monday?
That's every week, right?
No, so that, it's every other week, so it just, so, I was just checking that because...
Well, I suppose we could, well, the week before is, it's best to do it consecutive all in the same week.
You're, you're not sure yet about the December 4th change. Is that, is that a true statement?
No, we're gonna...
I know you're gonna change, but you haven't settled on a date yet.
Well, it's probably gonna be the 20th of, we're gonna finalize that.
Okay, so you're talking about the week of the 27th for the interviews of, of the five to seven?
Yes.
Okay. But I'm also, you're, you're teaching on Wednesday, Thursday?
No, that's Tuesday, Wednesday. So, we'd have to do Monday, Thursday.
We lose that Thursday.
Not Thursday.
Oh.
Monday. Have to be Monday. I can't do a Thursday.
Do they have to be in the evening?
Do they have to be in the evening?
No. Um, no.
No, flexibility.
No.
Okay, so there might, it might be that we have to move it to the daytime.
Like, we've done that. We've done that, that's fine.
Why are you so busy?
Dean, Dean just dropped his jaw. I don't know why.
I know. I saw him stink slap.
Dean, Dean's like, what?
We need the daytime.
Can he be here virtually? But I don't even know if that would work. But, um, all right.
We would discourage that virtual stuff, because of body language and eye contact and, you know.
For that, we need to see what we hide.
I don't want you, I want you to be there, because you're good at this, and I think...
Meeting, no, you're not meeting.
We have to be, I mean, I want to make sure you're...
You are on the 20th, the week of the 27th, yes, you are. The week of the 20th is the, just the, the applications.
Okay.
And the, and the workshop.
And the workshop, yeah.
But we're not sure about the 20th yet.
Yeah, we're pretty sure, because I think everybody can make that, except Ginny. And that's bad. But Ginny, we can fill you in on the workshop information.
Oh, workshop, truthfully, I've done this before and so on, so I don't mind, but I am most definitely is that having, meeting in person, to play in person.
Right, you want to be a candidate.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll be the next week.
So, so let me just, we have two daytime workers here, a lot who do a daytime work. Are you at all available that week? We could do night and maybe two days.
Whatever, whatever works.
Yeah, if we, if we, it would, I, it would be appreciated if we, it's, maybe we could start maybe at noon? I don't know how, how many hours do we need?
One per candidate.
One per candidate.
One hour per candidate.
Would we endeavor to do all in one afternoon, that's the...
Yeah.
That would be a lot.
You know, you would have this thing called interview, that, you know, interview fatigue?
Yeah.
You would hate, I would discourage that.
Although we could do like a 3, start with 3, and like 2, 3, 4.
We can be flexible about, you know, when we do it.
But we have the...
Well, and, and they can't do it in the evening.
Overpart, what is the time? What?
On Thursday evening, I can't.
But I mean, what time? We did something.
Oh, Monday, generally, I'd be, yeah, Monday is free.
After 4:00, yeah.
So, Monday evening.
Monday evening would be good. Monday evening would be good, that would be the fourth.
And then we need two more.
I thought that was the twenty.
Wait, you made it on that day.
I thought you were talking about the twenty-two. We're on the twenty-seven.
The week before, yeah.
That's the twentieth.
Yeah, so Monday evening, Monday evening.
Monday evening.
Okay.
I'm gonna help, I'm just gonna go, I can't go. Carla, I'm gonna write.
Okay, yes, thank you.
The visuals I'm thinking.
Tuesday is not, Tuesday evening is not good, so how about Tuesday day for anybody? Yeah, afternoon, who's available?
On the twenty-first.
No, twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
It could even be late afternoon, because I just have to get out of here by five-thirty.
Terry.
I'm fine.
You're okay for Tuesday afternoon?
Yeah.
Sheila, you don't have a class? That was your Sunday class.
Well, no, so Tuesday on six to nine now, November.
Okay, so you're doing the afternoon.
I could, I could do up to five-thirty.
Okay, okay, up to five-thirty.
Monday, the twenty-seventh.
Eleven twenty-seventh.
So are we doing the twenty-seventh?
We can do the evening on the twenty-seventh. Jen, you're back on the twenty, okay.
Aren't you gonna start with the twentieth, though, for the workshop?
Evening.
Yeah, that's already out there.
Oh, it's up.
That sounds like a plan.
What time? She has to be done Tuesday by five.
I refuse to.
Twenty-seventh, what time?
Okay, alright, good.
Whenever, whatever, what time can anyone be here on the twenty-seventh? Monday.
Anytime.
I can come early that day.
The twenty-seventh, I could be here, I would say by three-thirty.
Okay, so if we said four o'clock?
I could be here by five.
Five, let's go with five.
If I have a clock on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so that's five to eight or so. And then Tuesday.
So five to eight means three interviews, five, six, seven, okay, just wanna make sure, okay.
And then the twenty-eighth, noon?
Tuesday afternoon, Sheila has to be done by five, you said noon on Tuesday?
Yeah, how about one?
One.
One would be better than me, because I can work out.
This is the twenty-eighth.
So one, two, three, four. One to four?
Wait, let's hear from Dean.
Sorry, which day are we?
The Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Let me, can I say something too? On this day, you need five hours blocked, because you'll interview four and you need at least an hour for deliberation.
Are we only doing two?
If you wanna do two, that's why I thought you, I I heard, I I thought I heard you wanted to compress.
Oh, we don't know how, so how many are the first day?
Five to seven.
We have, we have three, we have three blocked off for the first day.
When does it get, when does the fatigue hit?
After three.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I I would suggest three dates, but if you wanna go two, just know that this is gonna be a heavy-duty day.
And it will be starting at one.
Three dates.
Wait, but I think, don't you have to leave by five-thirty on Tuesday?
On Tuesday, yeah, so I, one to.
We can only do threes.
Yeah, we can only do three.
We can only do three, just.
So, so one.
Well, no, we could do four, one, one, two, three, four. We could do, because she, oh, she could need to leave by five-thirty.
I know, yeah, sorry.
But then you gotta, then you gotta have another day for deliberations.
Okay, so let's, then let's shift to a third day, and we finish the interviews and then deliberate?
I would say at least one or two interviews on that last day.
Okay, so Tuesday, one to, are we doing two?
One to four, maybe do three.
Okay, one to four, and then.
Here's why I'm saying that. If you get six candidates, she can stay till five for deliberations.
Okay.
And then you'd be done with two days.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense?
She can deliberate one hour?
It would.
I, we, I, I would say this.
Okay.
You will have spent a lot of time with each other and with these candidates, consensus typically in, uh, happens fairly quickly.
Okay.
Now, I made me wait wrong, I don't know who's applying, but you guys usually, the cream usually rises.
Okay, so we need one more day, go ahead, Jenny.
So, so I was gonna say, so if if we do wanna power through and make this, I could, I could do a late start on my class, just in case our deliberations.
You know what, Sheila, though, I don't think it's great, though, for us to do so many interviews at once, so let's, if we can, if people can do it on, I guess, Wednesday.
The twenty-ninth?
Would that be like if needed them, or?
Well, you you would need it for deliberations no matter what, so you may wanna block two hours on the twenty-ninth, one hour for an interview, one hour for deliberations.
Because right now we only have six interviews.
Right, exactly right.
So Sheila, you can't do the evening on the twenty-ninth, right?
Yeah, I I can do again up to five-thirty.
And?
So I could do two, starting at two?
Dean?
I could probably make it work.
Two or two-thirty.
Two o'clock?
Two, two, two. Two to five?
Jen?
I'm gonna send you a new copy.
Terry.
Two to two to five.
Two to five.
It's about morning.
You can be done at that.
I won't have time tonight. I'd have to reschedule.
Is that Thursday?
No, but I have Children's Choir that, I'd have to reschedule, but.
What time is the choir?
Four-thirty. I could reschedule, but I.
But if you have one interview, you'd be done at four.
Yeah.
You could be done at four.
But then we won't deliberate, he's gonna.
Can we go?
No, you have one, you have one interview.
All you need is two hours, one for interview, one for deliberations.
Right, yeah.
Well, let's just do it and I'll, I'll, I'll work it out, because that's.
It sounds like, though, if we just have one interview and then one hour of deliberation, we're done at four.
Okay, it was a hard start. Assuming we do one hour of deliberation.
Yeah, I know.
Let's just go with it and I'll.
Alright.
Work it out.
Okay, I could take over your Children's Choir.
So.
So five to A M.
Yeah.
You can tell I was a high school math teacher. Based on, based on my horrible handwriting.
I was a high school math teacher, tell me, I I stink at writing.
What's the time on the twentieth?
The twentieth?
Yeah.
Five, or whatever, because we have finance and buildings and grounds, so we'll.
We'll do it right after.
After.
Yeah, so what, so does that start at five?
Five.
At five, and we don't even, at this point, I don't even know what's on an agenda for that.
Well, we aren't supposed to go to half hour today, but.
This, this has to be closed session, because we're gonna be talking names, and we, we agreed to keep those names confidential.
We're saying roughly five o'clock.
Five for finance and then, depending how.
And then how long do we need for that meeting?
So let's say about.
No more than an hour.
Say five-thirty?
For the twentieth?
We could say five-thirty.
For the twentieth, for our portion of the meeting. So a one-hour closed session's plenty.
I'm gonna say about five, five-thirty. Five, five. Oh, five-thirty on the?
So I said about five-thirty, because I just wrote finance, you got buildings and grounds, so then the session about five-thirty, we would just start it, and then we'd go to close. Because this is open.
You got that, Jenny?
I do, I have always checked.
That's why she said about the five-thirty closed session there, on the twentieth.
I'll, I'll.
On the, yes, one-hour closed session.
I'll do, I'll, I'll send her an updated.
Okay, then, so now we have the interviews, what does that do with the rest of the calendar here?
Well, if you make a decision.
On the twenty-ninth?
You can, what we would say, Carla, is you call the candidate that you like, and say, we'd like to offer you the position of superintendent at Main two oh seven. You call me, so I can call the two that are not moving on the process, walk them off the ledge.
You know what, though?
Then you call Todd.
Kevin, well, this isn't the three. This is our seven.
Oh, this is the seven, oh.
Oh, yeah.
You were delivering on the three. You gotta whittle this down.
At the end of the twen, uh, thank you, thank you, thank you. At the end of the twenty-ninth, you'll have three finalists.
Yeah.
Now you've gotta, now you've gotta schedule the three finalist interviews.
Okay.
Before you start thinking about that, let me say this. I would do each of the three finalists on three different days. Um, because, if you go with my recommendation, what you'll do, I'm gonna throw out some times. On day one, I don't know what date is, day A. My handwriting stinks. Day A, whatever this is, this is finalists. At four P M, you might have the school committee members.
I'll interview Dean.
Circle around Robin.
Right, gotcha, though.
At five P M, you would do the community parent interviews. At six P M, the board would interview them. We have tools, feedback sheets, that these people and these committees would get to the board before you meet with the candidate. You would do that on day A, B, and C, you've gotta add some time at the end of C to pick your finalists.
So you recommend, I think, that we do that a week after?
I would, I would.
A week after, yeah.
So this is done on eleven twenty-nine. So you've got a board meeting on focus of the four.
So maybe four, five, six?
You've, well, you've got a board meeting on the four.
Oh, you do have a board meeting on the four?
Right.
Well, let me say this, what time is your board meeting?
Six.
You could do three, four, five.
No.
The board meetings.
It's too much.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, sorry.
I'm sorry, that's, that's fine.
It's gonna look good on the calendar, it will not.
It won't, it won't work.
Yeah, no, like, that, that's definite fatigue, that's when you get to the board meeting, you're all gonna be like, I don't understand.
Yeah.
So do you want to look at five, six, seven?
Yeah.
Well, that, again, that throws.
Oh, you're off then.
The Thursday night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Throws me out.
Oh, and I have to do the six.
And I will say this, the people you pick for these committees, they need to commit to all three days, you want consistent feedback for the board. So if they're gonna miss one of these, they can't be on the committee at all, and we have them sign confidentiality agreements, just so you know.
Okay, does that work well? That feels like complicated to pull off, that works okay, though?
It work, yeah, so you, because the people who sign up, they want to be at the table. With, so that when you, when it comes down to, the board announces who the new superintendent is, they want to have been at that table to know, yes, this, this is, this is, person's ready to roll.
And there's sample letters in here to invite people on that committee.
So should we try to target, like, is it, like, late afternoon feels like the window that was generally working for us here, is that?
Well. Well, you're trying, you didn't wanna pull, like, your school committee, you don't wanna pull them out of the school day.
No, but for us, maybe we, do we need to go in the order, you, does it need to be school committee, community, or weird?
We take their input.
You, you want, you want the board to be last.
So they ask questions?
Yes, and we'll talk about how that works.
Okay, alright.
We'll talk about how that works.
It's gonna be tricky to get three nights that week, that we can all be there at six o'clock.
Do it during the day?
That's what I was just saying.
Then we can.
Then you gotta get subs and, and or, it's.
I mean, it's important, so.
I mean, people go to P D during the day sometimes.
Yeah.
George.
It's at the end of the world, with enough notice and subs, we'll be able to cover.
Okay, so.
Okay.
I know subs are tight, but.
Let's look at that week, then.
So we're looking at the week of the fourth?
We are now looking at the week of the fourth, so we could do it on Friday, too, if we have to, but let's pick three days in there that might work.
Alright, and I'm telling you, I am, I have a trial that's local.
Okay.
That is starting on December fourth, so I'm only gonna be, I could probably be here by four o'clock, that's gonna be that week.
Okay, on any other day?
Those days, yeah, yeah.
But maybe then you run your, if you're gonna cover subs, so you do two, three, and four.
Okay, but can other people make it?
Say that.
Four o'clock on the, during that week? Whether it's Monday, Tuesday, Fri, first of all, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, because.
Friday would not be good, because you're starting the holiday season yet Friday.
Yeah, but we might have to.
No, but I'm, I'm just saying that, I don't know, I, I just.
And you said, but Linda, you said you were out, Linda, Wednesday, the sixth, right? I'm, I, yeah, but also then I realized I have a trial, actually, so, starting on the fourth, in our hearing.
Let me ask a question, would it be possible that the, like, if a board member couldn't be there, that they could be, go to a different, um, interview session? Like, if the school people were interviewing at twelve o'clock and the board member couldn't be there at, at five, would that be?
Well, I think you wanna have the board together.
I, I know, but I, I'm just.
Is that impossible for everyone to do it at four?
Which days? You can't do the, um, the sixth?
The sixth, I was saying I was out, because it's my daughter's birthday, but I can do it for an hour, like, it would be one, I have a.
Okay, so let's take this, let's take the fifth, we can make four o'clock on the fifth.
Five, five to nine, I'm out.
Yeah.
Well, hold on.
Out of state.
Out of state.
Go ahead, go. Because I think, based on looking at it, the final decision will be made by November twenty-ninth, so I think that's the most important day. I'll stick to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, three days, interview five to six to seven people, and then we make the decision, and then I'm, we are done.
But that's, that's just whittling it down to the final.
Yeah, we still have the final three interview, that's what we're planning for.
If this, this part right here, up here, all of this is connected to that number, Jen, you're out that week, you're saying?
But if the five to seven people, uh, when they are out of state people, we have to fly in, and you know, you guys all count, counted on that timing wise, too. They probably stay overnight, one night, interview, boom, and then they'd be out, flying back home, possibly.
Yeah, they're, they're flying in and interview, yes.
Yeah.
Is it bad to kick to the next week? Is that too much of a lag?
To the week of the eleventh?
The leg of the eleventh, yeah, so.
We could do Monday, then.
We could do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
I'm good, anytime.
I'm free.
I'm free.
Is that better?
So the finalists during the week of the eleventh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's bad, it's impact our decision.
Yeah.
Well, we have to kind of.
Well, by the time you get to the third, the third's finalist that night, you will be making a decision. So you're talking eleven, twelve, thirteen, so you're still within a window to make an offer.
Yeah.
And have a board meeting.
What's your, what's your last day of attendance?
Twenty, the twenty.
I mean, you, you won't have parents traveling.
Twenty-seven.
That's right, twelve, the week of twelve eleven works.
Yeah, can we do the twelve eleven, is that better overall?
I, I, I have a lot of flexibility, that's. That's, yeah, that's just my last day at classes, so it'll be the same schedule as the, that week of the twenty-ninth.
So the eleventh is your last day of classes?
The eleven, twelve, twelve.
Oh, okay.
Eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Are the last days, okay, so fourteenth would be open for you, but, okay.
So then, the candidate, the final three candidate, we get to do one person per day?
I would suggest that, because, because you've got two committees meeting with that candidate.
Okay, let's try and do it eleventh, twelve, thirteenth, if we can, let's go through that.
Are we looking at the bigger day?
Well, let's talk the six o'clock time, first of all, is that available?
On the eleventh, I can do that.
Okay, so eleven, six o'clock.
So then we're gonna do four, five, six for the board?
Right. Four, five, six, yes, four, five, six for the board. On the eleventh, it will be six o'clock for us, what about the twelfth? Twelfth is a Tuesday.
Twelfth, I would have to, I, I would have to be done by five-thirty and so.
So we could do two, three, four.
Two, three, four.
So four o'clock, can, can you make four o'clock on the twelfth?
Yes. Okay.
Is that okay? Terry? And then the thirteenth is a Wednesday, your last day of class.
I'm the same, so it would be the same, I'd have to be out of there by five-thirty.
By five-thirty, so.
Where do you, where do you teach on?
So maybe things.
Two through four.
I can cover four.
Four o'clock, guys.
So it's social work, correct?
No, never mind.
Four.
Alright, so on the thirteenth, yes, so we have the eleventh, twelve, thirteenth, eleventh at six o'clock for the board, twelve and thirteenth at four o'clock for the board.
Say that again, Carla.
Eleventh of December, six o'clock.
Yep.
Twelfth, four o'clock.
Yep.
Thirteenth, four o'clock.
Final.
And then, um.
And we deliberate.
We deliberate that day.
Yeah, you need, you need some time after, after this last one.
Is that work, remember one on the thirteenth or later?
The only thing is, Sheila, you have to leave on the thirteenth at.
By five-thirty.
That doesn't.
That doesn't give you much time.
If you guys really have an hour to deliberate.
How about three o'clock on that day? What if we do three o'clock?
Yeah.
One, 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 two, three?
I could do.
That'll give us, that'll give us time for her to deliberate.
I could do one, two, three for me.
Three o'clock on the thirteenth.
Thank you, everybody, I was.
And we only need to be there for that three o'clock time, right?
We do.
Not the one, two.
Don't hit.
That's, that's correct.
Right, that's why I made little bubbles around.
Right, that's what I thought.
And does that, so that school committee then includes the teachers and students?
Typically, students do not, are not part of any interviewing.
We'll make, we'll make decisions around that.
You guys make that decision, but that's typical.
Okay.
Okay, just, just so I know, now, George, I wanna check with you, so we will deliberate on the thirteenth, on those three, we will, the next day, I, somebody, me, I will call.
That night.
And offer a challenge.
That night.
Okay, and then we need to, do we have, do we have to have Todd go over the contract, et cetera?
Yeah, so you, 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 George and I are gonna work on a compensation, kinda listing of, like, districts. I think Todd, you'll look in your packet here, we'll talk about this more, but Todd, you work on that at least a month before you make that offer.
Okay, and so, once that's done, and that is all worked out, we will have to adopt at a board meeting, um, so we need to have a special board meeting.
Um, Donna, can I ask, typically, I know every situation's different, how long does it take by the time you offer, does that take a week? A week.
A week.
So that's why, so it's, that's gonna be.
Typically, Chad is, is the I A S A attorney, and usually, I would say, nine times out of ten, you get it done within a week.
Okay, so we're thinking the eighteenth for the special board meeting?
Which is that Monday?
Oh, wait, that's a little, that's a little soon.
That's soon, because we wanna bring the, what, what day of the week is the thirteenth?
That's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
So they give you, they only give you three days.
Yeah, so we need to do it on the twentieth.
And, and you close on the twenty-second, right?
You might have to do it on the twenty-second. Well, just because if it takes a week, you offer the thirteenth, it's a week, that's the twentieth, and then.
Well, I think by then we should know, though, when we go to the board meeting.
Well, here's the thing, you can, you can put language on your agenda that says, we approve, uh, John Smith, Jane Smith, as superintendent of Manchester High School, pending negotiations. That phrase will let you out if, if something goes wrong.
Yeah.
Does that breach confidentiality?
No.
No.
Once we get to this, to this moment, and we're, we're negotiating contract, you all are negotiating the contract, once that goes. the contract, once that goes.
We tell the candidate, you're the guy, you're the candidate, tell your board president right now. We can't control that anymore.
Right, okay. So it looks like the twentieth might be a day that we would set up.
Do we want that at night?
We'll do it when people can make it, you know, because it's a special board meeting, so. Only before this.
We're done shopping.
That day, because it's the final Wednesday before Christmas, I can't cancel rehearsal.
Okay.
So I think it's in the afternoon, so it either have to be in the evening.
Or the morning.
Or before three o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah, morning would be fun.
We could do an early meeting too, if it's easier for people who are working and want to come before.
Morning works, I mean, I can, at this point, I can be flexible.
Okay, so.
And.
We have a chair.
Before you publish any calendars, whether it's this calendar, or the focus groups of your performance, can you just let us know, so we make sure that we block and we're all on the same page?
Yeah.
I don't want to get out and public.
No, that's fine. Tentatively, well, I mean, I think we're pretty, on the twentieth, we're gonna have the special board meeting, assuming all of this goes.
Jen, are you in town on the twentieth?
Uh, yes.
December twentieth?
December.
For a morning meeting?
Yes, I'm good.
So we can do a morning meeting, if that's better for everybody.
On the twentieth?
Yeah, all right, let's do that.
Would you do morning?
What time?
Eight.
Ten?
Eight?
Sorry.
And this is.
This is a nine, it's quite the difference.
How do we compromise? Eight thirty? Can you make eight thirty, Jen, come on, I'll have coffee.
He went to ten thirty.
I said correct.
So eight thirty?
Linda?
Oh, can't do.
But I could do eight thirty.
Oh, finalists day, the December twentieth at eight thirty, meaning to approve the meeting.
No A M. to special meeting.
I can do it.
All right, so.
Let's do it.
Eight thirty, A M. twentieth, on the twentieth.
So what'd you say, thirty eight?
So that's the, what'd you say, the twentieth, right?
Eight thirty on the twentieth.
George, is that a pretty good time? Okay, okay, because, yeah.
Will you have donuts for?
I will give whatever.
I will give.
Hold on.
Whatever, donuts, coffee.
We'll be posted, all we do is collecting applications.
Okay.
So it's not like we have to end this process before we.
Okay, but you just, well, yeah, but, we want to get that position filled, okay.
Is it, is it posted yet? Do you want that person start January first?
No, no.
No.
No, we have interviews.
Oh, you got through the school year, oh, okay, okay, okay. Oh yeah, Steve is one of them, right?
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, did we get through the timeline?
I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on what we've agreed upon.
And I will update everything on this packet and send it to Jenny tomorrow.
Okay, okay. So this grouping of dates is for the five to seven candidates. So the twentieth is the workshop, where we present those candidates, the, these are the candidates that we're presenting. You have a finance meeting, and a buildings and grounds, and then we'll go into closed session at five thirty, to look at those five to seven candidates and do the workshop, okay?
Based on paper.
Based on paper, there's no people. We're the people, right now. So, so then when you. So then the next week, so right after Thanksgiving, on the twenty seventh, evening interviews from five to eight, that would be three candidates. On the twenty eighth, it would be in the afternoon from one to four, three interviews. And then on the twenty ninth, in the afternoon, two to five, that is one interview and then deliberation. From this deliberation, we will come up with three finalists. And those three finalists will be on the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, the board meets with them, and the first finalist is six on the eleventh, four on the twelfth, and three on the thirteenth, and then deliberate. And then we have the other committees that need four, five, two, three, one, and two, okay?
So we can be there six P M., for example.
This is you, yes, this is the board.
About an hour or so, right?
Yes, so these are when your committees, and then this is the board time. And then this last day is including the deliberation.
And just know this, I know we've talked about this, this can get compressed if you don't do seven semi-finalists.
Yeah.
Just throw that out.
Right, we might drop this.
You never know, right? We'll make that decision at the time.
But we're, we wouldn't know that until when you present the candidate.
On the twentieth.
So what we're doing right now is, is preserving the time.
Right.
Okay, okay, and then I move over here to Wednesday, the twentieth, at eight thirty A M. with donuts and coffee.
I'm commenting on that.
I, I'm just coming here to approve the new superintendent. So between, now remember, the night of the thirteenth, we call the final candidate, like, this, we're offering you the position, and then that starts the negotiation window. For the contract of that legwork will have been worked out ahead of time, so that by the time you get to the twentieth.
We should.
You should have a contract.
Okay.
Okay, Kevin, you touch pictures of all of this?
I think so.
Are we gonna have our early, early dinner, because we are meeting five, six, seven P M., that's the dinner time, definitely. Are we gonna, while we're interviewing?
I don't know, why are you looking at me? I'm not buying you dinner.
While you're interviewing.
I think that's a good reason.
Very serious.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna update this, correct?
Oh, I thought you had the race.
Go ahead.
No, did you want to take a picture of it?
Go ahead.
We're gonna be putting out, we're gonna be, we're gonna have a schedule, it'll be on our website.
Release the tomorrow, right away or something.
Yeah, maybe don't put that photo up on it.
In the meantime though, the homework that we need help with is the focus groups that you want us to ensure that we set up the time. So once we have that from you, then we can set up the time, so that looks like. And that's really important, that we get that information, so we can get started on it, so we can say, okay, here's the schedule, so you can let people know.
Okay, so do we need to do that right now?
Middle of September.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Well, we need to meet to do that.
You guys either meet, or email, or do a Google Doc or something, different ways, do it different ways.
Maybe, maybe a Google Doc is in there, you guys have Google Doc? I like Google.
Yeah, it makes it easier for people to edit, look at. I don't care either, but, yeah, you gotta make some decisions, and remember, we're gonna do communities, three different, or staff, three different, the three high schools, and student at three high schools, just make sure we pluck those in, we want to make sure we get everybody.
And when you do the, you do the, you're gonna do those in person as well, and the survey, that's what I'm still confused about.